Okay, we're live now.
Good evening and welcome to the June 25 Pleasanton Planning Commission meeting. We'll call the mission to order, uh, meeting to order, excuse me, and let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Estella, could we please have roll call?
Yes, sir. Commissioners Jago, Jane.
Present.
Mohan.
Yes.
Pace.
Present.
Wedge.
Present.
And Chair Morgan.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Okay, very good. And staff, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, no amendments tonight.
Okay. How about fellow planning commissioners, any amendments? Everybody's nodding no. And with that, we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a request for removal for discussion or explanation is received from the planning commission or a member of the public by submitting a speaker card. And just for everyone's that might be on the, um, on Zoom, just to let you know, we don't have anybody from the public here in the meeting room tonight, so no speakers, no speaker cards, correct?
No speaker cards were received.
And so for the consent calendar, we have two items, actions of the zoning administrator and approving approval of the May 28 minutes. And I'll just ask whether fellow commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the consent calendar.
I have one comment. So after last meeting, Commissioner Jen and I spent some time with the planning department staff and we went through some of our roles and responsibilities. And there was some mention about the capital improvement project review slash oversight. And at least for me, I wasn't fully aware last time that, I just thought it was an FII for us and so I did not pay that much attention to it. But I think it would be whether we approve the meeting minutes or not, I think it would be good to go through some level of detail of the capital improvement project if that we think is part of our scope of work.
I'm not, sorry, I'm not tracking.
Yeah, so I think let's go through the roles and responsibilities, the discussion that we're gonna have, and then maybe we come back to this item after that.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Mohan, you might be, might be speaking to the minutes in which the planning commission reviewed and found the capital improvement plan to be in conformance with the general plan. That is, in fact, the scope of the planning commission's review and that was the request made to the planning commission. It's not a detailed review of the content of the CIP as such. In addition, the city council also reviewed and approved the capital improvement program at its, one of its most recent, more recent meetings. So there is not an opportunity to go back and revisit the CIP in that.
No, I get it. I'm not saying we're gonna go through a tedbear again, but I said I was not aware of the scope of the roles and responsibilities. So I think let's go through those and maybe for the next round, we will either do the same or have a slightly different methodology of looking at the capital improvement project.
And the, and again, the scope from that meeting was the planning commission approved that it was in conformance with the, yeah. And so do you have any concerns about the consent calendar, the, the actions of the zoning administrator or approving the minutes from May 28? And when we get to, to new business, I guess we'll have another opportunity to bring up another item too, if you'd like. Any other comments or questions about the consent calendar? With that, I'll invite a motion for approval.
I move to approve consent calendar.
Okay. Second, could we have a roll call, please, Estella?
Sure. Commissioners Jane.
Aye.
Mohan.
Yes.
Pace.
Aye.
Wedge.
Aye.
And Chair Morgan.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
All right, and item three is meeting open to the public. We don't have anyone from the public here. And so we'll skip this item and we'll go ahead and move to, to the public, public hearings.
Just for the record, I'll confirm that no speakers, no speaker cards were received. Thank you.
Okay. No one from the public is here and no speaker cards were received. Okay. And with that, we'll move to the public hearings and first item here is item four, community and economic development update. And my understanding is this is purely educational. Staff is going to be presenting some information, just a level set, and it's really preparing us for item five that we'll discuss on the agenda after we're finished with item four. So with that, staff would like to go ahead and present.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. So this item tonight, as Chair Morgan mentioned, is, is really to give some additional information to the planning commission. Some, some fairly exciting changes afoot based on the most recent budget adopted by the city council on June 17th, which will provide much stronger alignment between community development and, and by extension, planning with, with economic development functions. And so as we move into that new phase, which will be effective July 1, we wanted to give the commission a bit of an overview of what that looks like and some information on what our economic development division has been working on, some of the collaborative efforts we anticipate and some of the opportunities that the planning commission will have to, to weigh in on some of those things going forward. So we have a short presentation for you, which Melinda's gonna advance for me. So very briefly, just we'll give a quick overview of kind of what the new department looks like, its structure. One of the key documents that guide our economic development focused activities is a strategic plan that was developed and adopted a couple of years ago, and Melinda's gonna provide some information there. I did want to acknowledge that Lisa Adamos, our, our economic development manager, is on vacation at the moment, but anticipating the July 1 date, we wanted to come to you ahead of that and, and so Melinda will do her level best to think, to cover the ED strategic plan piece of it. And then segue into a little bit of discussion about some of the things we are working on, the specific programs, and then a look ahead, as I mentioned. Excellent, thanks. So this just gives a little snapshot of, of what the combined community and economic development department will look like, what our new org chart will be going forward. So really, some of the key changes there are the, as I mentioned, bringing over economic development into our community development department, and we will be, have a new name, the Community and Economic Development Department, to reflect that function. With that will come some, some changes in how we're staffing that. So our, our existing economic development manager, Lisa Adamos, will continue in her current role, but she'll be joined when we manage the transition to find a, a new, a new planning manager by Melinda in a new role, which is the economic and business development manager. That role is intended to give us a lot more capacity in focusing on some of the process changes and improvements that will help to support business attraction and retention, streamlining our zoning and permitting processes, acting as a concierge, and other functions that are really hopefully gonna help to facilitate and join together and, and marry up planning and, and economic development functions. Next slide, please. So just to maybe speak a little bit to some of the roles and responsibilities, we have as part of our City of Pleasanton Commissions and Committees, the Economic Vitality Committee. That's a committee that's appointed by the, by the city council to represent a wide variety of business sectors, and that group sits and meets, I think, bi-monthly. And really, they, they sort of act in the same way that the planning commission does for the planning department in giving the economic development division input on, you know, programs, helping to provide insights into our business climate, and as the planning commission does, providing suggestions and recommendations to the city council around economic development pieces, as well as guiding implementation of the economic development strategic plan. So the planning commission, as you know, is the body that's charged with making recommendations to city council on land use policy documents, legislative changes that, that are, relate to land use, such as general plan and specific plan amendments, amendments to our zoning code and zoning map, and various legislative entitlements such as planned unit developments and rezones. And then, as you know, the planning commission has approval authority over certain set of types of permits, including use permits, design review permits, subdivisions and other, a few other things as well. So both bodies are advisory to the, to the city council. We look forward to opportunities to sort of cross-pollinate and, and help the work of the, of the EVC inform the planning commission and vice versa, as we bring forward some of these initiatives that, that have a lot of overlap and, and hopefully some more synergy. Next slide, please. So I put this slide together just to sort of try and illustrate a bit graphically how we see some of, some of these things coming together with the new, with the new department. So I, I tried to characterize it sort of snappily with, with three Ps, planning and land use, programs, and process and policy, and I'll go on and talk a little bit more about what some of those things are. But what this really illustrates, what I wanted to illustrate was, was that there's a lot of overlap between these things. So some of the things that we call programs, which are really about business support, the more we can offer insight into our permitting processes, you know, hold the hand of businesses coming through the door and help them understand, how do I, how do I get a building permit? How do I establish? How do I move forward? And creating that, that really good connection between the information and planning and from our zoning code and, and general plan and, and specific plan and so on, and how that overlaps with some of our efforts to, to really welcome businesses into Pleasanton. And then similarly, we have a lot of pieces which are around, how do we improve and set a different policy framework that could help to support and encourage new business to, to establish in Pleasanton? So when we, when we write policy or when we create processes, we can make it as easy or as hard as we like for people to do things. We can prohibit things outright, we can make things able to be done with very, very little review and, and sort of discretion, and we can, we can put a lot of things in the middle. And so Pleasanton on the whole has tended to skew a little bit more towards the, say, a little heavier on the regulatory side. Things are generally subject to quite a bit of review and scrutiny. It creates process, it creates time when businesses are trying to move forward, and it creates, in some cases, a degree of uncertainty. So untangling that will be one of the really key focuses of our economic development, business manager, working with Lisa through a program to, to really analyze and hopefully improve some of our processes. And I put some sort of general kind of questions and framing things in the way we think about how, how land use and economic development work together, and that includes things like creating zoning opportunities. How much land do we dedicate to particular land uses? What do we allow where? And then thinking about that, you know, deciding what belongs next to each other? How do we avoid incompatibilities? How do we locate things strategically so that they can, they can benefit from each other? Processes that I mentioned, and that's really policy decision about how much community oversight there should be and how much planning commission input there is appropriate or, or helpful, and is often beneficial, and how much really needs to be leveled up to the city council to make decisions. And then sort of on the, on the more programmatic side, some of the ways that we can facilitate and attract businesses to reduce uncertainty and cost and help to evaluate and make policy decisions around the types of businesses that we want to attract. Excellent.
Okay. So a little bit about the economic development strategic plan. As Ellen mentioned, this was adopted a couple of years ago by the city council in August 2023, and the goal of the plan in the green box on your screen, "To recalibrate the City of Pleasanton's economic development policies, programs, and strategies to proactively meet today's market opportunities and challenges." Excuse me. Excuse me. This policy document guides the city's economic development priorities and activities over the next five years. The plan is based on the technical findings of the economic profile report that was prepared, as well as input from city staff, from the Economic Vitality Committee, local stakeholders, and the city council. The strategic plan, the strategic, strategic plan's implementation is a tactical roadmap for the city's economic development policies, programs, and initiatives, and it's prioritized by up-to-date demographic, economic, and real estate market trends. The plan consists of five implement, implementation plan priorities, which contain corresponding key initiatives or programs that are supported by action steps to tie to proposed timelines. And the five implementation plan priorities are on your screen. One, economic development capacity building. Two, business retention, expansion, and attraction. Three, local revenue growth. Four, entrepreneurship and innovation outreach. And five, major projects accelerator program. And we'll go over a few of those priorities. And it's my understanding, Lisa said, we're about two years into the economic development strategic plan implementation. Okay, so we're gonna go over, as I, as I said, some of the programs and the policies. So just wanted to highlight a few of them. So the strategy two, business retention, attraction, and expansion. As you can see on here, we have the enhanced visibility, marketing, and branding strategy. There's a number of things that, you know, Lisa and her mighty team of one have been doing over the last two years, working with, collaborating with our colleagues and, and other departments, developing business attraction materials, developing, which I'll get into a little bit, a new Y Pleasanton webpage, and then as well as looking into developing a new economic development microsite page. I won't go ahead and read through all of these things as you have them there on your screen, but there's a number, a number of things that she's been working on over the last couple of years. The, if you have not seen these, they've been kind of filtering out through the community, community. Lisa and team developed two new business attraction brochures to highlight the city's economic assets and elevate Pleasanton's visibility as a key retail and office destination. So it's really important to develop these, not only so they could work in hard copy formats, but they can also work in an electronic digital format. And these are really important as we can distribute them to commercial brokers, we can distribute them to other companies, to the chamber, to the PDA. It's a really, really helpful resource material highlighting not only, as it says on the cover, some of, you know, our major markets, shopping, dining amenities, our historic downtown, but it also just kind of gives a high level of, of our, our development review process. Here's a little glimpse of our Y Pleasanton webpage. If you've not visited it, I'd encourage you to, to go and, and peruse the website. Again, it's highlighting Pleasanton's assets for prospective businesses when they're exploring the city. And again, we have the brochures here on the website that people can just download directly and use those for, for their, you know, to show their clients or show other potential businesses. Okay, strategy three, which focuses on local revenue growth. This, it's in particular, this initiative is included in the economic development strategic plan for the enhancement of a retail development program. So over the last year, Lisa has been working with a consultant and developing a retail inventory and market analysis, which includes possible redevelopment strategies. And then out of this information and this analysis, it's in allowing us to look at and identify some target categories and potentially some recommended retail tenants that we can essentially go after and market ourselves and try to get them to come here to Pleasanton. Other areas that, that I will be focusing closely with Lisa on that Ellen mentioned is, is really looking at our, our, our permit process, our development review process, and really looking at expedited permitting, permitting process for these target retail and some of these target tenant improvements. And then another area that we are going to be working really hard on, we already do this, but we're gonna be just continuing to focus our outreach and assistance for property managers, really going out and meeting with the, the local commercial property managers, and what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What can we do better on? And, and you know, how, how can, how can we be here to, to help them? So that, that's really, really important is, you know, working together. I know not nearly as much about this area as Lisa, so, so it's too bad that she, she's not here today. But continuing on the local revenue growth, so one of the, the areas that she's been working with our Pleasanton Downtown Association is looking at the business improvement district structure and looking at opportunities to revamp that, as well as the, we are fortunate, the, the Pleasanton Downtown Association hired a new executive director earlier this year, and so Lisa and I have been working closely with her. And then again, we will continue to work with, with her as well as the PDA, again, on the downtown bid renewal for 2026. Other programs that we have done for several years and, and we are looking at continue to manage and enhance the city's support local program that there's, there's several times throughout the year where we focus on, one of the big ones is the weekend after Thanksgiving, and then there's also a holiday gift giving guide, and then as well as the in Pleasanton social media. The last one on here, tourism and hospitality is really important. We, we work closely with Visit Tri Valley, we have a really positive partnership with them. And then we are looking at potentially, which is shown in blue there, to facilitate some hotel development and then explore some expedited permitting for some hospitality projects as well. There's a lot on this screen, so I'll kind of go over it quickly, but just another, another strategy of the economic development strategic plan, the entrepreneurship and innovation outreach. And this really supports the long-term success of existing businesses. We, again, we implement, we are implementing local business retention activities and working with the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce, the East Bay Small, East Bay Small Business Development Center, bringing, bringing services here locally to the small businesses is really important, because as you know, Alameda County is very large, and we want to bring services here directly to the Tri Valley. Some also really important events and that Lisa has been integral in is the Innovation Tri Valley Game, Game Changers event. This event highlights companies in, in each cities of the Tri Valley that, that make a global difference, but, but they're companies that are right here in the Tri Valley. This year's awardee from Pleasanton was Cowbell, which is one of the fastest growing cybersecurity companies in the US, so very, very exciting. And lastly, the, the city's engaged with IGATE, which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to building a thriving startup community in the Tri Valley. This is a really, really exciting program, which again, if you, if you haven't heard about it, I'd really encourage you to, to learn some more. I had the pleasure of, of visiting Daybreak Labs, which is an incubator space for life sciences and hard tech startups. They provide R and D office space, it's located in Livermore, but they have support from Livermore, Pleasanton, and Dublin. Again, it's just, it's amazing, the, the, honestly, the brains, the, the ideas, everything that is coming out of Daybreak Lab, and many of those startups are, you know, we, we want to keep them here in Tri Valley, and specifically, we want to keep them, we want to keep them in Pleasanton. So just again, another, another really, really exciting program that, that we support. And then moving on to the strategic plan, strategy number five, the major projects accelerator, developing a business roadmap to provide a clear pathway for zoning and permitting. We've talked about that a little bit already, but for, for, you know, not just retail, I mean, it's honestly, it's all businesses. We're, we're looking at developing clear pathways in zoning, streamlining zoning, design review for the offices, for the retail, and then specifically looking at, as you know, because we brought it to you a couple of meetings ago, really looking at recommendations to update our zoning ordinance, ordinance for innovation-based businesses. And, and we're just, you know, Pleasanton is a thriving community for, for that sector, and so we want to again, make, make those areas just easier for those companies to navigate our, our zoning and permitting process. And now I'm going to hand it back over to Ellen, and she's going to finish up the presentation.
Thanks, Melinda. Yes, I wanted to really conclude with a little bit of a highlight of, of kind of what, what we're doing and what's, what's ahead. You know, I think for the planning commission, the last year has been one of a lot of, I'll just call them more routine applications, small conditional use permits, approving housing projects, and not a lot of engagement with some of perhaps some of the more, I'll say more exciting perhaps initiatives and that, that let us be more strategic and, and, and benefit from the input from the commission on some of our kind of longer range thinking about planning. But the, there's a lot that...
dedicated to building a thriving startup community in the Tri Valley. This is a really, really exciting program, which again, if you, if you haven't heard about it, I'd really encourage you to, to learn some more. Um, I had the pleasure of, of visiting Daybreak Labs, which is an in- incubator space for life sciences and hard tech startups. They provide R and D office space. It's located in Livermore, but they have support from Livermore, Pleasanton, and Dublin. Again, it's just, it's amazing, the, the honestly, the brains, the, the ideas, everything that is coming out of Daybreak Lab. And many of those startups are, you know, we, we want to keep them here in Tri Valley and specifically we, we want to keep them, we want to keep them in Pleasanton. Um, so just again, another, another really, really exciting program that, that we support. And then s- uh, moving on to the strategic plan, strategy number five, the major projects accelerator of developing a business roadmap to provide a clear pathway for zoning and permitting. We've talked about that a little bit already, but for, for s- you know, not, not just retail. I mean, it's honestly, it's all businesses. We're, we're looking at developing clear pathways in zoning, streamlining zoning, design review for the offices, for the retail. Um, and then specifically looking at, as you know, because we brought it to you a couple of meetings ago, um, really looking at recommendations to update our zoning ordinance, ordinance for innovation-based businesses. Uh, and, and we're just, you know, Pleasanton is a thriving community for, for that sector. And so we want to again, make, make those areas just easier for those companies to navigate our, our zoning and permitting process. And now I'm going to hand it back over to Ellen and she's going to finish up the presentation.
Thanks, Melinda. Um, yes, I wanted to really conclude with a little bit of a highlight of, of kind of what, what we're doing and what's a, what's ahead. Um, you know, I think for the planning commission, um, the last year has been one of a lot of, I'll just call them more routine applications, small conditional use permits, approving housing projects. And not a lot of engagement with some of, perhaps some of the more, um, I'll say more exciting perhaps, um, initiatives and that, that let us be more strategic and, 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 and benefit from the input from the commission on some of our, um, kind of longer range thinking about planning. But uh, the, there's a lot that, that still lies ahead on that front. And so I wanted to give you a flavor of some of the things that will be becoming your way. Um, starting by focusing on a couple of our, our bigger, um, efforts right now. Um, the first of which is, uh, of course, East Pleasanton. And, and as you know, uh, there's a lot of development activity currently, uh, sort of in the, in the works. Uh, you recently reviewed and approved the, the Kiwit, the villages at the Quarry, uh, project on the, on the site shown on the map in, in light green. Um, that was approved a couple of months ago. Uh, we have two major residential applications which are, uh, moving through, um, or will be moving through a process to consider annexation and residential development of, um, I think it's close to, to eight hundred or nine hundred units, new residential units out there. Um, so those are, are also in process and will be coming forward to the, to the planning commission. I won't say maybe still in the near future, but the not-too-distant future. Um, and then, um, a couple of light industrial projects as well. Uh, the development of the Amazon property with about a six hundred and forty thousand square foot, um, uh, warehouse facility that, that's currently under review. Um, and then to the north of the East Pleasanton Planning Area, uh, Parcel H, which is also an annexation project, um, but for a smaller, I believe it's about three hundred thousand square feet of, of industrial space as well. So there's a lot going on in East Pleasanton, uh, which brings me to the next slide. So when, um, uh, back in February, went to the, the city council for, for policy direction on whether or not those two residential projects I just mentioned ought to be annexed into the city. Um, the council did give us that direction, but also recognized that there was a bit of a, um, bit of a gap or a bit of a, a lack of, of really overarching policy guidance for East Pleasanton. Um, you probably know that we've had, uh, the intention stated in our general plan for a couple of decades to do a specific plan or to do a comprehensive plan, um, despite efforts that, that did not come to fruition. And so, um, as we look at these developments coming online and, and anticipating potentially more of the same, um, having a more comprehensive plan in place or set of policies in place, um, was, was a, something that the council wanted to emphasize. Um, so the direction that they gave to staff was to proceed with what we're calling the East Pleasanton Policy Framework. Um, that will ultimately result in a set of, um, of general plan policies or policies that will be amended into the general plan. Um, it won't include land use changes because we don't have the opportunity to do sequoia in the time that we have available, but it will really set a vision and, and, and intention around, uh, what we want, uh, East Pleasanton to be. Um, obviously some of the, the, the stage is set somewhat by the fact we have approved projects. We have projects in process. Those will continue concurrently with this planning project. We made a commitment that we weren't going to sort of upend, uh, those processes in order to, uh, allow for this other policy framework to move forward. Uh, but nonetheless, it really helps us to think about things like connectivity, about, um, you know, these other future undeveloped areas and so on. So that process has started. Uh, we're currently, uh, conducting some, uh, stakeholder meetings. So some, uh, not quite one-on-one, but sort of small group meetings with staff uh, and, uh, various, um, interested parties, uh, who have either low and land ownership interests in thing, or agencies that have, um, interest like ZO7 or East Bay Regional Park District to really solicit their, um, you know, kind of where their concerns might lie, what they would like us to look at, any background, planning documents we should be aware of, um, that's happening now. Um, we will be coming to the, to the planning commission and city council this summer. So August, September is our, our, our goal. And that will be a, um, uh, sort of presentation on what we've found from our init- our issues analysis and the stakeholder meetings. Um, using that information to develop some policy options for planning commission and city council to weigh in on, uh, uh, later on in 2025 and then bringing that back through an adoption process with, uh, the commission and with council, uh, early in, in 2026. So that's moving forward. Uh, should, should be interesting and, and it's certainly challenging to, uh, you know, a lot of very complex issues out there, uh, different ownerships and, and interests. So we'll be digesting all of that. And then just to touch base on, on Stone Ridge Mall, it's always a topic of interest as to what's sort of going on at the mall. It's been a little quiet since we last talked about it and that's been bec- because, um, we've been continuing to work with the owners to, uh, to group up, to, to get sort of on the same page really and, and to the same starting point around, um, planning together and collaboratively for, uh, for redevelopment of the site. So as you know, there's, uh, a complex ownership with four different property owners, six different parcels, a very large site over, over seventy acres, of which some is, is already zoned for housing. Um, and although we adopted a framework plan back in 2023, that's, it's quite high level. And so what the ownership group is looking to do is to, um, bring that forward and crystallize it into something that feels like a development plan that works with their, um, that marries up really their development, uh, goals and, and needs with some of the framework policies and intentions set by the, by the framework. Um, one of the keys to unlocking redevelopment of the mall is renegotiation of the, um, reciprocal easement agreement, the REA that exists between those owners. They've been working on that as well, no small, small feat. We understand that they are, uh, close to having that draft and be able to review it among their team. Um, and then that will enable the conceptual land use plan, uh, work by the owners to begin. Uh, we hope, uh, to be completed in about six months, starting this summer. Um, and then following that, they'll be back with, um, what will eventually be an application essentially for a, uh, some kind of a master plan or comprehensive plan for the, uh, for the mall area. So that is moving ahead. Again, it's been a little bit in the back, in the background. We haven't had a lot to publicly share, uh, with you and with the community, uh, of late, but we're looking forward to some progress on that in the next, uh, next six months or so. Next slide, please. Um, and so just to, to really wrap up, there's, there's quite a lot, uh, ongoing. We have many residential and commercial applications in process and many of them will be before you, um, either this year or in 2026, I, I highlighted a couple, a minute ago. Um, you looked at a draft of the Innovation-Based Business Ordinance, uh, a meeting ago and that will be back with you in August, July, July? July twenty-third is the plan to bring that back for, to respond to some of the questions, bring some additional information back. So hopefully that can move on to the council for adoption. Um, we are looking, and this is really an important, um, piece that is part of kind of unlocking some of the process that we have that really bogs down some applications and creates a lot of work for staff. Um, a, a look at our, our design review process to see if we can maybe simplify that for some, some types of projects. Um, some time ago, we, uh, we, 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 we had a discussion about our objective design standards and some focused updates to that. It's, it's moved a little bit more slowly than we, we had hoped in part because we're working on a lot of other stuff. Uh, but that will be back with you, uh, in, in this, uh, early this fall. Uh, and then also an update to our, to the Hostienda Design Guidelines to integrate the new ODS, um, the policy framework for East Pleasanton I just mentioned and the master plan in 2026. And then I just wanted to conclude by saying, there is a lot more that could be in the work plan as well. And so in the, I think in particular during the budget development process, the city council heard, staff heard, staff generated, the community generated, the council generated many, many ideas about ways that we could enhance economic development, improve re- revenue, make ourselves more business friendly, um, improve our economic conditions. Um, and there was also a whole suite of, of other ideas, a sign ordinance update, re-looking at the downtown specific plan, a general plan update. And those are all big initiatives that need to be sorted and prioritized relative to the workload that we have and the resources that we have and our capacity to get things done. And so, um, on July fifteenth, the city council will be looking at, I, last time I looked, it was ninety-four different ideas and initiatives. And these are all really kind of new things or things that are just starting up. Um, and, and not just from community development, but just, but also from other departments as well and begin to sort those and, and develop out of that, um, a kind of a scope of work and a, a two-year work plan for, uh, for the city that, that really gives us a sense of direction. Um, and, and hopefully is right-sized to the resources that we have to get it done. So that's happening on July fifteenth. Um, of course, welcome to tune into that. I think it's a four, four-thirty start, so it's an early start. Uh, and then that will, um, my understanding is that intention is to then come back to commissions with the kind of outcomes of that plan and, and daylight that with, with the commissions. Um, and also, you know, allow if there's an opportunity to sort of shape anything within that, we can certainly talk about those things, uh, in that work plan discussion. So that's sort of the path ahead. Hopefully that gave a little bit of an overview of what's, uh, what's been happening. I feel like we've all sort of had our heads down and working on a lot of, uh, a lot of projects. I'm, I'm really excited about the, uh, Community and Economic Development, um, uh, sort of merger. I think it really recognizes how important it is for land use policy, um, you know, process to all kind of marry up into something that really helps, like it's moving in the same direction, which is to make us a, a better and stronger place, um, and community and, and really to focus on the things that help to enhance, enhance our presence here in the Tri Valley and the region. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about it and super excited that Melinda gets the opportunity to take her planning knowledge and her really, um, fantastic ability to, to problem solve and to sort of work across departments to try and untangle some of the, uh, the complexities that we've created in our, our own processes. So I'll leave it there and, uh, happy to, uh, to answer any, any questions.
And as we discussed, item four is just informational, no decisions being made. And really it's just a matter of whether we have any open discussion and any questions and comments by planning commissioners of staff before we move to item five.
Yeah, uh, thank you. So this was very informative. Uh, so I appreciate putting this together and congratulations, Melinda. So you, you'll have, would you be still supporting the planning side? Or would it be?
Yes. Yeah, there's no set date. Uh, we, we, we need to hire a new planning manager and then I'll still be within the department. And so there's just a natural transition period that I'll probably, you'll, you'll probably still see me for several months.
Um, so yeah, I, I think that's maybe a good, good moment to say, um, this isn't unfortunately going to be sort of a flip the switch thing, right? July one, we start being able to do all of these things because we just, until Melinda is, is sort of fully in her new role, uh, we, 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 you know, she's still, she's still managing the planning group and still has a lot of, uh, of, of kind of more traditional planning projects that she's working on. So, but we are, uh, proactively, uh, working to begin that recruitment so that we can get that work started, uh, before, well, well before the end of the year is, is the hope. So I just wanted to sort of set the expectations a little bit. We're, we're making a step in terms of the restructuring, uh, the budget, um, related sort of authorization to do that. And then we'll kind of roll out the work plan, uh, towards the second half of twenty-five.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Um, so because I'm kind of new to the, to this, um, commission and I know you guys have been working on this for a long time, but I just wanted to throw my two cents in and realize that in working with a lot of different jurisdictions over the state, one thing that's incredibly encouraging, and I think everybody's well aware of it, as you guys have stated, but the fact that you're combining groups within the city is going to make such a huge impact on being able to work through anything. One of the biggest things I think that I've seen in cities, um, over the years is when departments are separated and they actually work against each other. I mean, I, I, I work with a, a Central Valley city, which I won't name, but it is well-known that the planning and the economic development and the building department, all three work against each other. And they do not, they do not cross, they don't try to help each other. They, it's a, it's an absolute nightmare. And, um, I don't think that was occurring here in Pleasanton, but I, I just think by incorporating everything and getting your leadership, um, tree kind of all under the same group, the fact that, you know, how easy it's going to be able to work together and simplify and streamline and everything, you, you see the cities that do that and how efficient and functional that they are. I just, because I haven't been a part of this, you know, you guys have been doing this for so long, but I just want to throw my comment in that it's going to be wonderful for you guys. Just a comment.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, we're, we're very, very excited and, and I, I feel really blessed here that, that, yeah, like our, our city staff and all the departments, we, we work really, really well together. Um, but at the end of the day, we, we have different bosses. And so this makes it a lot easier that now we're all going to be reporting to Ellen. We'll have one boss. Um, so, so yes, yeah, we're, we're very, very excited about all of this. So thank you. Appreciate the comments.
I'll jump in. Um, congratulations. Thrilled. Um, I've had the fortune, the great fortune of having to, uh, getting the opportunity to kind of serve here for about six years now and, and to kind of get to work with all of you. And so it's wonderful to see, um, some of the comments and things that we've seen over time about how can we make this, um, process easier? How can we make the city preserving its character while kind of inviting these new development opportunities? How do we kind of mesh that? Um, no easy task. Um, but it's, it's great to see very concrete steps, um, by people who, all of you who I think are motivated to try to find the right path forward for us. And so I think, um, these kinds of activities, um, showing a, you know, a kind of an openness to what the, the future may be and kind of how we're going to think about it and what the changes are, I think is really important. Um, a couple of reasons for that. First, obviously we have enormous pressure from, um, the state leadership around how we're going to do some of these things. And so taking proactive steps now, um, to try to keep as much as we possibly can in our control to preserve our community, I think is critically important. And as that slide, um, Director Clark, that you had up, that kind of showed all the various things that are going on in the city and the pre- recent press, press release around changing some of the, um, some of the zoning that we have in the city as well. There's, there's enormous interest in what this, uh, city has to offer. The recent recognition that we had around the, you know, the, the quality of life here, you know, obviously, um, speaks to the great work that's been done over time, but also the, the pressure we face as a community, both to, um, to try to incorporate all the interests that we have, but also do it in a way that, um, is, uh, is prudent for, for, for our city. So I'm thrilled to see, uh, these changes. I'm thrilled to see the thoughtful way in which we're thinking about, uh, at, at a, kind of at a, uh, not just on a project-by-project basis level, that's obviously critically important and where we spend a lot of time here, but also at, at a, at a broad level, thinking about the, the strategies for what this community is going to look like. Um, you know, the, the east side is certainly a, a very significant part of that, that the largest amount of open space we have. But also I know that the amount of work that's gone in, at least in part, the amount of work that's gone into things like the mall over time. So thank you for the, for the work there. I know, um, there've been, I don't know how many hundreds of conversations I've been in where these kinds of things have been talked about by members of the community here. And so I know that these things are cr- critically important to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward. And I appreciate, uh, the work that's been done here, the very thoughtful work that's been done here to, to set us up for success, uh, and position this as, as we go forward. I'm very excited to, to, to be part of it and to, uh, be responsive to our community and, and, and those needs. So thank you for your leadership here.
Commissioners Mohan and Jean, any, any comments or questions on item four? I know you're thinking about the next agenda item a bit, but anything else on item four?
For me, congratulations. This is awesome news and I think, uh, putting the orgs together is a good first step. Now you will have to break through some process barriers and I think also some, uh, this is the way things are always done here, barriers to make change happen and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations and hopefully we'll see you from time to time, just through the cross pollination.
She thinks she's going to escape from planning, but no.
I guess I would just ask one question. Uh, you've, you've addressed this somewhat, but do you expect, uh, touch points between planning commission and Economic Vitality Committee? Anything above and beyond what we've seen so far? Or anything that's coming to the planning commission where we, you know, understand the planet, the Economic Vitality Committee's role in that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, you know, one thing that, that, uh, Melinda, Lisa and I were, were talking about, um, the other week was, was because I think particularly with the, with the community, community, I have a hard time saying it, community and economic development, uh, uh, transition is that I think that there is an opportunity actually to do more of that. And, and maybe there's a, whether it's a joint, a joint meeting or, or, or something that could help the, the two, the two commissions to kind of come together and sort of maybe talk about some of those overlapping, the, the, in that Venn diagram, like where does the EVC and the planning commission come together and have some consensus around the things that, uh, we, you could be advancing sort of in the same direction? Um, because I think, you know, the EVC, they, it's, I mean, I, it sounds a little crazy to say, but some of the, some of the power kind of lies in, lies in planning, right? It's sort of like you, the, the, the rules that we have, the land use that we have, the processes that we have are the things that either help or hinder development and, and, and investment from a, just a kind of pure like build, building type of perspective. And so I think the opportunity to understand each other's perspective there, um, is, would be really helpful. So we'll, we'll be talking more, I think, about how we can provide that opportunity in the future. We're nothing planned yet, but we'll, we've been definitely talking about that as a possibility.
Okay. Commissioner Mohan, you look like you're getting ready to?
Yeah, I was just, just thinking about this, that following, uh, your lead, maybe, you know, one or two of us should nominate or be nominated for the, as an alternate or, or. one or two of us should nominate or be nominated for the, as an alternate or the Planning Commission nominee for the Economic Vitality Commission, like we are on the other commissions. At least that gets some cross pollination of ideation going.
So, so the composition of the EVC is created by ordinance of the, if it's a policy or an ordinance item of the city council. There was a recent reorganization of the EVC to sort of modify some of the rules. It was a huge, a huge commission committee and they kind of shrunk it down a bit. So I am aware that there is also another, some more interest in maybe revisiting some of the commission and committee discussion in the fall. So that would be a good time to, you know, maybe think about whether there's a, an opportunity there maybe for the Planning Commission to have a presence on, on the EVC. As it's currently structured, that doesn't, that doesn't exist, but, but it, but it could.
Just warning, they meet really early in the morning, 7:30 a.m.
Oh, that's a good point. Congratulations, Melinda.
Yeah.
Just for my information then, just like we are on the three commissions, some of the other commissions, or the Park and Rec Commission. So is the Economic Vitality Commission different? And we cannot have a Planning Commission nominee on that commission to listen in?
It's based on, right now, the composition of that commission is determined by the, by the city council. They have a membership and it's, you know, two members from the, I don't know, retail community and two members. So they, they assign the representatives. If they were to want to create a place for the Planning Commission, it would have to be a city council action. You can't just sort of nominate yourself to be on another commission. Kim just mentioned, and maybe worth just flagging, and there's, there are some rules around incompatible, what did you call it?
Incompatible offices.
Incompatible offices. So we'd have to make sure that was all, you know, above board. But, you know, it's something that could be considered.
And I love it. This might be one of the first process we kind of break down and be aligned the groups together. Right here is a great example of this is the way things were done, have always been done. We have these rules and regulations, yet we want the Economic Vitality Commission and the Planning Commission to work together. Let's make it happen. All right. Thank you. But I get your point. Thank you.
Sounds like it's within the realm of possibilities and something to engage with the city council on, yeah.
And faster, right? Let's get some new process going.
Okay. Shall we move to item five, which is kind of the meat of our meeting here in terms of decisions anyway? And I understand for item five, there's no staff presentation, but that Commissioners Jane and Mohan are going to, or excuse me, Commissioners Mohan and Jane are going to present here. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. So I sent that to Stella.
I should not hear.
Yes, I should be. We have somebody here, so I can trade.
And maybe you can frame this. Are you looking for decisions possibly for something that we would recommend to city council? Or is this more educational too? What are your thoughts here?
So I'll get into that. I think initially, we were thinking, if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, or maybe three meetings ago, we were thinking like that might be what we do, like a letter to city council. But then as we like spoke with the staff and just looked at where things are, I think that may be a little bit premature at this point. So as you will see, there are certain things which we have researched and where we think we are. And especially for all of us to be on the same page in terms of a few things. And then I would like to have an open discussion within the commission on where we want to take it and possibly have a small committee to work on some items. So that will be coming up soon.
Thank you. Please proceed when you're ready.
All right. So this is Planning Commission's subcommittee discussion. And as I said, a few meetings ago, we wanted to send a letter to council with some recommendations. As we, as I and Commissioner Mohan researched some of the things we have, we have come to a conclusion that first we need to be on the same page within the Planning Commission on a few things. And I know we have worked on a lot of things. So the intent here is to go through a few of those. So if you can click on the next slide. So these are the topics. So first, we will talk about a little bit roles and responsibility of Planning Commission. And this is extracted from a booklet which was given to me when I joined the Planning Commission. And maybe you got it too recently. And just researching what's in PMC. The second part was more on long range versus short term planning, how we look at that and allocate resourcing. The third part is on some of the supporting of streamlining of processes, which might lead to better customer satisfaction and reduce cost. And then possibly formulate a subcommittee. And obviously, we'll report back to Planning Commission before we do anything or recommend anything. So that's kind of the agenda. If you click next. So the first item is just roles and responsibilities. And Director Clark touched upon some of it earlier. So I'll go through a little version of what was given to me from League of California and as per my understanding of PMC. If you click next. So these are kind of commissioner duties as highlighted. So we, and I'm not going to read the subtext. The first one is about general plan. So we are responsible for the general plan. We consult public in various means to prepare a general plan. As we know, our general plan is last updated a very long time ago. It actually was planned up to 2025. Things have changed in that more than a decade timeframe. Then we have specific plans. So specific plans could be things related to a specific community or a specific area. And then that's the second area, which is in our purview. The third one is on zoning and subdivision maps. So we spend a lot of time on item number three here. So I don't have to say more on that. Item four is individual project approvals. So we make sure they are consistent with our general plan, specific plans, ordinances, et cetera. If you click next. We also are supposed to review the capital improvement plans. And that's something which Commissioner Mohan was saying. We were not very clear when it was presented to us last, at the last meeting, what's our role. So I think if I knew that it's something which we have to go a little bit more in details, I would have personally spent a little bit more diligence and more time on it. So something which came up and I think should be known to others as well on the Planning Commission. The next is coordinating planning efforts. So these are coordinating local plans and programs with other public agencies. So these could be, as we just discussed, economic vitality, you know, safety, et cetera. Like it's a broader planning effort, which we coordinate with other agencies, public agencies, could be a variety of them. Seventh one is considering land acquisitions. If we want to acquire or dispose, that could be purview of the commission. And then we can undertake special studies, special planning studies. So these are things which I got from there. If you click next. And by the way, this was taken from a source which we don't know the authenticity of, but is that in general alignment with what you thought?
It's a little bit, not quite aligned. So maybe it might be worth a note of explanation and Kim can help me out here as well a little bit. So some of the things that you listed were drawn from the government code, which sort of assigns broadly the duties of what they call, calls the planning agency. And the planning agency essentially can comprise any combination of the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, the city council, right? I mean, every, cities do it differently. And what it really does is it sort of describes a very broad range of duties, some of which may be assigned to the Planning Commission. So I would say a subset of those things are probably things that the Planning Commission does. Others, the city council retains authority over or has delegated to staff. So where we, we look generally, when we're looking at the duties of the Planning Commission is our Pleasanton municipal code. And it's a little regrettable. I think there's an old version of the Planning Commission duties in the thing. Our, our online code version was updated about, about a year ago to sort of update the duties of the Planning Commission to what you actually do. So, I mean, many of the things you listed there are, it's, you know, definitely accurate. That's, you know, reviewing on conditional use permits and certain other things. But in certain other matters, the commission's role is advisory to the council, and that's as defined in the municipal code.
So is there anything specific you want to call out from those items? If you go back one slide or two slides?
Yeah. So, I mean, well, land acquisitions, we don't do, I would say that number six, coordinate planning efforts, that's not really something that the, that the Planning Commission does. Generally, that's a staff delegated function, right? We have, whether it's through the city manager's office or community development department, we generally will do the role of liaising with entities like our fellow cities, with Alameda County, with the local LAFCO, the local agency formation commission. So I, or, you know, or more regionally, like ABAG, MTC and other bodies like that. So that's a good example of one where we may integrate some of that information into a report, understand that regional planning context, but it's really the, it's really a staff function to do that regional coordination. That's a good example.
Could you comment on item five one more time, since this may come up near the end of our meeting, based on Commissioner Mohan's?
So this is, I'm sorry. My ear is weirdly buzzing. Was that, can tell if that's my ear or the speaker? It's kind of a high pitched one. So in this case, what the, what the scope of the Planning Commission's review is to really determine that the, that the capital improvements plan is consistent with the general plan. That's what the statutory requirement of the law, of state law is. But the capital improvement plan itself is generally formulated by staff and then approved by the city council.
And so I believe you're saying the Planning Commission does not have a role in capital allocation?
Correct. Yeah, you're not a budgeting agency that rests with our, with our city council. And that's really the, I mean, the capital project is how we spend money on capital plans and projects.
Commissioner Mohan, would you mind going back one more slide, just to see if Director Clark has any comments about the first four items there?
Yes. I think, I think one and, one and two are true. I think assistant writing is a little bit interesting. We generally, obviously, staff is doing the authoring, but we would bring to you, for example, a draft for input. And you might as part of that help us to revise or craft specific policy language. But the commission doesn't sit down and pull out its computer and start typing, right? Staff will bring to you, because you wouldn't want to, for one. So staff would generally bring to you a draft document for your review and input. But obviously, that input is very important to the formulation of those documents. We would reflect, for example, amendments or modifications that the Planning Commission wanted to see. And then the Planning Commission would forward that recommendation on to the, to the city council for, for a review.
So not drafting, but reviewing and recommending?
Yeah. I don't want to go so far as say you have no involvement whatsoever in the drafting, because that's not true, right? We see it all the time. IBB, great example, right? Staff brought you a draft. I'm guessing it would be, have been hard for the Planning Commission to sit down and draft that, you know, what a very technical, you know, ordinance document. But you gave us some really, some good feedback. You asked a lot of questions. We're coming back to you maybe with some additional options or alternative policy language that you might want to fold in. And then that will be, will be part of the ordinance that goes to the, to the council for review. So zoning and maps, this is generally true for the most part. The Planning Commission is in many cases, the final reviewing body on, on certain actions, conditional permits, use permits, variances. It does not, the commission doesn't typically act on zoning ordinances. The council does that, but you do make a recommendation. And then four is certainly true that you will do exactly what it says here, review for consistency with our general plan. And generally, in many instances, not all, you would often be the final reviewing body for a particular land use approval.
And I'll just add one, one thing that might be helpful and useful in this is you've put out some great concepts that the Planning Commission is definitely involved in. But generally speaking, as you know, the city council sets policy and the city council defines the rules and responsibilities of the Planning Commission by ordinance. And the revised ordinance that unfortunately wasn't attached to the handbook that I received, but that I did see later, the revised ordinance that outlines the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission is actually very good. And it's very useful in telling exactly what the Planning Commission does in the city of Pleasanton. So these are all concepts in generally. And sometimes, you know, you do have cities that do have more authority or their planning agency or a planning commission has more authority, but it's all specified by the city council and what they designate by ordinance.
Director Clark, would it be reasonable to circulate that document?
Yes. Happy, happy to share with you the, it's chapter 2.30 of the municipal code. We updated it in 2024 as part of a, for, in part because the commission took on the housing commission's roles, right? So we had to sort of do a bunch of municipal code amendments. And so we revised that to reflect those new duties. But we, I also noticed when I was looking at, I was like, there's a whole bunch of things here that are not things that the Planning Commission does. And so we aligned it to, to reflect what the commission's duties are.
Yeah, thank you. So I would love to see that revised version.
Yeah, happy to send that out.
I think it's, it's a concept. It's not like to the T. We're trying to say, this is exactly, I'm just trying to highlight that you have a broad list of things which a Planning Commission gets involved in. And some of them, and a lot of them actually are long range. So that brings me to the, sorry, you wanted to add something? Yeah. So I think it's on a little bit of context here. A was a great informal conversation between Ellen, Melinda, Rag and me. I use the first names for this one because it was a nice informal conversation. And I think the discussion was around the, was a very open conversation around, I think, what's working well? And what are some of the issues that at least some of the Planning Commission members have talked about? And similarly, from the, from the staff side, what are the areas that the staff thinks we could, we should, where the Planning Commission can actually help the staff do their job better, more effectively, faster? So I think that was a great back and forth on what's working and what could be improved. Specific to this point about the roles of the Planning Commission, I think, you know, there's something that has been asked by a lot of the Planning Commission members, for example, for a while. I remember even in the Housing Commission, I was asked that, what is the role? Could someone just tell me when I joined? And now, so we have a roles and responsibility document that was done last year. I would have thought, just in terms of process improvement, that before we create a document about the Planning Commission role or a change in the role, maybe the Planning Commission should actually have a conversation about it to see, okay, that makes sense or not. So to me, some of this stuff actually, in terms of just simple communication, possibly could be improved to make it, make it faster and smoother between the commission and the staff. Because yeah, on the flip side, I do agree that there is a lot of what I consider busy work that the staff has to do to, to meet the, some of the compliance requirements, but also just the way things have been done. And I personally see no need to be involved in a lot of cases at that level of detail. Like for example, creating that innovation-based business document, right? To me, I see our role as mostly to give some input, you know, based on our, our life experiences, but that's pretty much it. You are the experts of planning. Our role is primarily just some general life experience and also in a advisory role to the council, but also most importantly, be a conduit or a voice for the folks in the city. If we hear something, we come and let you know, and you know, and vice versa. So I think just for context setting, this specific example of the role of the Planning Commission, if the document is out there, I think should probably, both sides would have been better served if that had been discussed, or at least brought up last year. have been better served if that had been discussed, or at least brought up last year. That's just my two cents. But I think going forward, that probably might, it might be helpful if that subcommittee that we've talked about actually does spend some time offline, and maybe just do a simple matrix of the roles and responsibilities, so there's no confusion going forward as to what we are supposed to do. That way, we don't also lean on you to do stuff that other people also are asking you to do for them, for example. That would be my two cents.
All right, thank you. So I think if you can click again, and I think the numbers are all messed up. They all became five. Magic. Click again, please. So I think an important point, and as you saw, a bunch of roles and responsibilities, some of them, you know, not exact, but conceptually accurate. There's a long-range set of responsibilities, and then there are short-term planning responsibilities. So short-term would be, a project comes through and we approve, and, you know, most of our calendar looks like that a lot of times. So I'll let you click again. So this was in the same booklet, and I went to the Planning Commissioners' conference at some point, and they also highlighted this. It says, "With so many responsibilities, it's important for every Planning Commission to think about how it will divide its time between day-to-day approvals and long-range planning efforts, both of which are important. It is easy to get caught up in day-to-day efforts at the expense of long-range planning." So, and this was quite striking and just front and center. So they actually, during their presentation, also put this up, that you will face this when you go out and serve on your city, that there will be constant pressure and constant day-to-day noise. And then your role also involves long-range planning. So I feel, after reading this and after some of the research which I have done, we have to balance. Like, we cannot be just focused on short-term and projects which come through. And just comparing it to any business, businesses have operations, so you allocate certain people, certain bandwidth to it. But then you also have strategy and planning divisions in any corporation. And you don't say that we are not going to look at strategy in long range. We're going to focus all of our effort on short-term. So my idea here is we need to move on both fronts at the same time. Like, we cannot just look at what's in front of us. We need to also look at what is far ahead of us, to get a little bit ahead of the curve. And especially if we look at our general plan and things which we have planned many, many years ago, a lot of that may not apply. And we probably need to come to terms with what do we want Pleasanton of the future, not Pleasanton of the future which people thought many, many years ago, right? Yeah, so we're living in the future. So it expires technically. They only planned up to 2025, so we kind of...
You disappear in a poof.
So there was no plan after that.
But I will say so, you know, on this one, and I totally get in sync on that one. But I also think it's very good to see your slide about the shift, if you will, of balancing long-term and short-term projects and strategic direction for the city. So that's, I think, I think we're aligned on this point, but we'll get into the details separately.
Yep.
I would say, I mean, from my perspective, this, you know, I have a whiteboard up in my office, and I have a left-hand side and a right-hand side. I have current planning stuff on the left-hand side and long-range planning stuff on the right-hand side. And, you know, we have the same, the very same discussion, right, as staff, and it comes back to kind of this work planning and what do we focus on? And there's some stuff, frankly, we have to do. I mean, we cannot not process current planning applications. They come in the door, Melinda and team getting through the process, and we do CEQA and all of those things, and many of them end up at the Planning Commission. We just had a lot of them of late, and probably have put some of our long-range planning things on the back burner. But it ebbs and flows. And so I would say probably five years ago, we were working on the downtown specific plan and mall planning, and more recently, and other things. So I think we're probably cycling back to a place where we're interested in being a little bit more forward-looking. But I will say there will continue to be a volume of current planning applications, because that's part of our job and our mandate, is to have people move through the system and processes applications. Now, the thing we talked about in our meeting was, do all of those things need to end up with the Planning Commission? And the answer may be no, and that's going to be part of a conversation about whether or not we amend our processes to maybe alleviate some of that burden of small things coming to the Planning Commission that perhaps aren't really warranting that attention.
Yeah, thanks, Director Clark. And I think that tees up to my next slide. It's about how can we support streamlining the processes so that you have better customer satisfaction, like, it doesn't take forever. It reduces cost, so that cost really is human cost and cost to the applicant of time. It's not just money. And we can probably use that time for long-range planning. So I think that was pretty clear, talking to both Director Clark and Melinda, that something has to happen there. And I saw in your earlier presentation that you're going to put some effort on that side, and hopefully, we can provide some inputs there, too. So I think that has to happen. Like, I would like to hear from other Planning Commissioners as well, what they think about this. Like, right now, and the staff will keep me honest, they spend a lot of time preparing material and packet and doing a lot of work for even routine applications, which they know would just go through. And it's not controversial, it follows most of the code. So how much time should they spend on those kind of things? Today is not the day when we know all the details, but I just wanted to hear from other Planning Commissioners, like, how much level of details you would like to see in general, right? Like, are the level of details too much? Are they too little in the current packets? I feel sometimes it's too much in many cases.
And are you speaking of the summary documents, which are often, say, 10 or 20 pages long? Or are you thinking of more of the packets that have 100-page documents? Or are you thinking a combination of both?
I think the combination, and maybe the applicant also has a lot of back and forth, because they're like, okay, it's going to go in front of Planning Commission, so I need to do this extra submission, I need to do the extra work, and also staff, of course, to summarize it and put it together so we can understand. So it's a combination, and not going into the details. I'm just saying that's an area which I feel we can improve on. Go ahead.
I think, no, Melinda referred to this, and I would rather have you tell us where the time is being spent that is not productive. Because I think the point was that a lot of checkmarks have to be done, which are not really needed, based on your experience, and your work elsewhere in other cities, in other areas. So you have some best practices that you know of, which I think Pleasanton would be, should adopt. So details I will leave up to you.
Sure. So, yeah, so one of the things that we discussed with Commissioner Jane and Commissioner Mohan, which are also, which were also highlighted in the prior presentation regarding the Economic Development Strategic Plan, we are looking at ways to streamline our development review process, and in the form of potentially looking at specifically the PMC, Chapter 18.20, Design Review. Those are not changes that we can make overnight, you know, those would be changes that we would need to bring to the Planning Mission, and then ultimately to the City Council. But really looking at ways to streamline, for example, single-story additions to, or single-story additions to existing single-family homes, trellises in the rear yard of an existing home, outdoor kitchens, all of these really routine things that make the quality of life for a residence that much more. But our current process, that you have to go through a planning design review, and then you have to go through your typical building permit. So that's just like one example, right? You know, we can take a look at that.
And maybe just to add to Melinda's point there, like, those are things that the Planning Commission really doesn't ever see, right? There's, it's happening administratively, you get a report of those actions, and you see it, right? The trellises, the small additions, they're all listed there for you. So...
But, yeah, you see that on that ZA actions report that you get, and then the amount of time that goes into not just preparing that report, but the amount of staff time that is then spent on each of those. Sometimes there's 20 items on that, and the staff time that are spent on each one of those that you don't see, as Ellen points out. But that is time taken away, so to speak, from maybe some of the other long-range tasks. And again, looking at some of our comparable cities, those types of projects are more streamlined, and an applicant can proceed directly to the Building Division through a building permit. Other items that we talked about, or maybe some of the more routine projects that you see, that appear, say, on the consent calendar in the form of a conditional use permit, you see those a lot for tutoring centers, for ceramic studios, those kinds of things. Those are very routine projects, and sometimes those reports can be 12 to 15 pages. And so we talked with them about, could we start condensing those? We give you, as an example, we'll say, the project is consistent with the general plan lands use designation of, and then we will then provide out four or five examples, or four or five policies, programs from the general plan of why we believe it's consistent. Do we need to list all of those? Can we just shorten that and say the project is consistent, and then provide the number of those policies? That's just one example. But we did talk about, for projects that are on the consent calendar, that are more routine, we have to bring those to the Planning Commission as it's qualified in the PMC. But that's more of an administrative process that we can look at to kind of streamline.
I mean, I would say from staff's perspective, we would love to make our staff reports shorter. You know, some of, I mean, I would say, the entirety of our municipal code, our approach to staff reports, is kind of an accumulation of input and feedback that we've gotten over the years. You know, I'm not going to blame past Planning Commissions, but sometimes, you know, there's really a period where, there was a time when there was a really controversial after-school program, and everybody got upset, and the neighbors showed up, and so low and behold, we're writing 20-page gender reports about things that are really, really come down typically to one or two issues, noise and parking. And so, you know, we've kind of, we've built a bit of a machine here. We're happy to begin to strip down and simplify that machine, but do it in a way that continues to deliver the Commission the information that it needs. And it's that balance that we're trying to seek. So we, yeah, we're really excited to hear some potential interest in maybe simplifying and shortening up some of our staff reports. That would save a lot of time.
And if I can just add one more point here, I don't think it's just about the internal, right? The staff and us. Anything that makes your job easier, heck, I personally am all for it. But I think even more importantly, what that will allow you to do is to serve our actual customers, the community, much better, because the turnaround times will improve, right? A lot of the stuff is done by you, but then it waits for our approval, and then, you know, one of us guys, including me, has some bright question that we need to ask you, and then we say, okay, now we're going to wait till the next meeting to answer that question. So I do see, because talking to friends, their work does get stuck, and they have no idea why something should take a few months, right? From their perspective, whereas from where we see it, we are all working very hard. The machine is working, but the customer does not see the result. So I think this will also impact the end customer. I am all for it.
I think primarily what you're talking about is which projects on the zoning administrator list are really going to potentially have an impact on neighbors and other people that are living in that area, because that's something that we're all conscious of.
Yeah.
So many of these projects, they seem very small, a fence or a gazebo or something else. And so it's fairly straightforward that if it's not impacting the neighbors, it's not really a public issue in most cases.
Melinda's been doing some analysis of all of it, we call them ADRs, Administrative Design Reviews, that we do, and we do hundreds of them a year. And of that, there's maybe 1% that get, you know, so basically, the way it works is we look at it, we send out a public notice if a neighbor has a concern, and we don't, we aren't able to solve it or resolve it, they can request a public hearing with a zoning administrator. I mean, I would say less than 1% ever go to public hearing. Much fewer of them ever get appealed and make it to the Planning Commission. So it's a lot of work for, on the whole, things that are very uncontroversial. But what it does is serve as a noticing tool for neighbors, to let them know that things are happening. And that's, you know, philosophically, what we've chosen to do as a community. And so I think having a policy discussion about that, and whether we can maybe decide that not everything needs to be noticed, elevated, and reviewed and scrutinized, would certainly make those projects go a lot more smoothly and easily for the applicants.
I have a comment if I could. Just kind of to add to that, a specific example is I did a single-story addition to my house. And it was a little while ago, but it was still, you know, working with the Building Department. But I went in, I'm obviously very familiar with planning and how things work, and I said, hey, you know, I've got a house, I'm adding this on, here's my setbacks, I meet everything, and I got the, well, we have to put this out to your neighbors. And I go, okay, my neighbors aren't going to see it, it's behind the fence, things like that. And I had to do the wait period, I had to go through all this. Obviously, I got zero negative comments from anybody. But as the homeowner and the owner-builder, I had to basically wait a month to even move forward. I couldn't work on my plans, I couldn't do anything, realizing, and everybody telling me, well, we're not going to have any negative comment, there's nothing to really comment on. And I was saying, okay, well, it's even a single story, I get the two-story, needs review and everything. But that's one of those things, it's a specific example of that probably didn't need to go through, A, all of your time, and B, the homeowner's time, or the builder's time, or whatever. Obviously, you know, time is money. I think those are the kind of things that I think everybody can see, concrete, see, that probably should be, you know, kind of updated, and could help everybody. And so I'm all for that. I mean, obviously, as a commissioner, where you want to see things and approve them at that level, even I'm aware that I don't need to, you know, I don't need to see that. And I don't think, I don't think you guys do either. So that's just a specific example, and I think that's a very positive effort in moving forward.
And generally, I think, look, we had situations where someone poured a tennis court, and like, we spent hours and hours debating on that.
Oh, don't bring that up, please.
So there are, you know, a few here and there in between, but usually, in those cases, neighbors are very vocal. Like, so they'll tell you, and those, I hope, continue to, you know, get surfaced, because you don't want people not have an opportunity to go and appeal. So we're not talking here about totally not giving opportunity for neighbors and others to object or have their opinions known. But it's not required in every single situation. And I think, I'm sure, like, other Planning Commissioners will chime in, but I feel like there's an opportunity to improve. So this will make experience for applicants far more smooth. It will allow them to pretty much move with building permits quicker, because I remember in my situation, unless the planning approves, you can't pull the building permits. If you pull it, and we had that situation with the signs, where, you know, you have to sign an agreement that if the Planning Commission or the decision-making body... that if, uh, the planning commission or the decision making body, the council, uh, disapproves your approval, then you go back to the drawing board. So it, it also adds some level of uncertainty to the process. So I, I, I think this is something which I'm all for reducing, uh, the burden on the staff.
Uh, just a couple of comments. This body seems to work really well together. That hasn't always been the case. And so I think, uh, Director Clark, your point about, um, a process has been built to try to anticipate what the needs, uh, to try to get to resolution has been over time. Um, we have built a very robust process that has allowed us to reach results. Um, and so I certainly appreciate the efforts that have gone in over the years to get us, uh, to that point.
And you're just, you're specifically talking about the city's ability to frame topics and present them in a way that's looking holistically, that makes it possible for us to come together and make decisions collectively that facilitates that or, or differently than that, maybe you're saying?
I think that's part of it, but there, there've been other times where there are certain issues we know are of interest to certain, uh, decision makers at times. And so there have been processes built and disclosure built to try to address what we know were going to be those topics as they, as they come up. Um, it is, right now, I think we have done a really good job of working very collaboratively together, uh, to try to get through some of those things. And so I think some of the need for maybe some of the depth of, uh, of the process probably isn't there. And so I'm certainly supportive of figuring out ways in which we can, um, streamline the process for the staff as well as for applicants for the reasons that have been identified. Um, I, I, you know, the, the reason I make that point is simply to say, I, I know the staff, as they have built this process over time, wasn't looking for extra things to do. Uh, and having been a part of, uh, that process, uh, myself over, over the years, I understand that, you know, it, it works now and we can see the way it works, because largely, um, when we're having discussion and when we're seeing feedback from the community and so forth, most of those things. I'll, I'll say most because I, yeah, I never want to be absolute. And I just said I was absolute by saying never want to be, but I understand that. But, you know, never say never, so to s- so to speak, right? But the, the, the point being, it's, it is rare that I see, and I just can't think of any, but I'll just say it's rare that I see that the staff hasn't thought of these issues as they've come up and we aren't briefed on them, um, when, when it gets to a decision making point. And they're, and I, I think, um, Melinda, um, your point about gathering data to figure out where we think these issues are likely to show themselves up, and that's where we would lean in with something more robust. And for the ones where it's unlikely to be, um, uh, generate a lot of, uh, interest. Um, and it's likely to be pro forma, finding, finding those opportunities, I think, is, is, is very, very worthwhile. We can, we can have conversations about whether something needs to be one page or three pages opposed to fifteen and kind of figure it out. I mean, I do think government doesn't always like to kind of, um, in my experience over the years, with many, many of them around the world. Do tests, do some testing and learning, but there, there might be an opportunity here to figure out ways in which we can try something that would be less dense. Um, still very important, but less dense and try s- some of those targets and see if that doesn't shorten uh, some of these issues. And I think reference is what you said, we've seen fifty of these over the last five years and there's never been an objection. Uh, that, that, that kind of data feels pretty good in terms of really making this process go much, much further.
I have a couple of comments. One is, I've listened to planning commission meetings from other cities and there are definitely other examples where the staff presentations are much more challenging to listen to and to understand. And so I think we have a real gift just by being here with Director Clarks and, and Melinda and all the other folks that were working here. That there, it could be much more challenging and difficult for us than it is. We have it really good. And the second comment I have, and I'm curious whether or not this is a passion at all for other commissioners at all, as, as it is an interest for me. And that is, when we talk about future planning calendar, for example, today, we have two items on here. One related to a ceramic studio and one related to the vineyard project and the split of the park that we already discussed. It would help me if I had more information about what was coming our way over the next few months to get a better sense for the types of things that the, um, that the planning department is working on. So for example, I, I just picked up, just in today's meeting, that, uh, I B B will be coming back to us July twenty third. We'll see the East Pleasanton, uh, concepts in the fall or late summer, fall. And then we'll, there'll be an objective standards update, probably also in the fall. And then also, uh, hacienda standard. So having some kind of a roadmap about what might be coming at us in the future, not necessarily with a timetable. But that gets me out of the mode about thinking about short term and helps me get into the longer term mode. So if I understand that in three months, there's something coming up on the east plan, well, maybe I'm going to be do more studying and answering and asking more questions to try to make sure that I am well versed in that area. So I, I guess my question to other planning commissioners is, would it help you also if we had a little bit more of a roadmap in the future planning calendar?
Yes, I was going to ask that as well. I think that would be very helpful for me.
Melinda and I were just, uh, talking while, yeah, while the commission was as well. And, and yeah, I think that's, that's very doable to maybe do a, I mean, it's, it's hard for us to to look ve- very far ahead, because the, sometimes the dates are so, you know, so much in flux and it's, it's difficult when we put something on a calendar and then it moves out and, you know, so we want it. But I think it's like a three month, um, look ahead would be, would be really feasible and, and you know, obviously with the understanding that dates will shift and slip sometimes. Um, but I agree to give you all a, a bit of a high, higher level look of what's coming.
I would prefer that not have a date on it, because that's shifty, like you said. It's more a sense of what types of things are you spending your time and efforts and resources on? And eventually it's going to come our way and it's, it's kind of forcing us to be projecting and looking ahead a little bit more than just thinking about what's on the calendar for the next meeting. So it's, it's, it's actually leading us into a point where maybe we're thinking more longer, more middle term and longer term. Mr. Jane, you, you've been doing a lot of work here, what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, I think absolutely that would help. Uh, I would say we also, and tha- that's not something which I have anything to say today. But, uh, also we need to always have two things going in parallel, long term and short term. So it could not be like you have months and months of short term stuff. And then you have long term, long term, long term. Like, i- it has to be both going in parallel, like if, if we are really serious.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just maybe, maybe make a comment there, right? Which is the work, the work happens at the pace that it happens and at the right time. And so while I think in an, in an ideal world, you have a sort of perfectly balanced workload, it's, it's not going, it just from a practical standpoint, it's not going to be like that, because that's not how the timing of the projects is always going to align. So what we want to bring to you is meaningful opportunities to bring you information that you can review and act on and, and usually generally not just information, but a decision, a decision point. Um, and so those things, particularly in the long range planning side, I think are, are tend to be quite uneven. Um, so while, while you can know that we're do- like, I mean, I mentioned a couple today, can know that we're working on certain long range planning initiatives. Not all of them are going to be in front of you in, in the planning commission, um, in your planning commission seats. And so maybe some visibility, as you suggest, Commissioner Jane, to the, what the work program is that we currently have in front of us might give you some more assurance that we are in fact doing exactly that, that we are tracking long range. Again, two, two halves of the whiteboard, there's a lot on both sides, uh, they're happening, they're not just always as visible, I would say, to the commission.
Commissioner Pace, did you weigh in on this one? I saw other people nodding, but I don't remember hearing from you. Did you have any other comments?
Uh, no, thank you. Um, I, I think the effort to figure out ways to reduce the burden in the presentation to where there's likely to be less public feedback, um, and they're going to be unanimous. I think those opportunities are great. I think if we are finding that also there are certain pieces of this where we, parking, noise, you know, impact to neighbors, those, those are the ones that we hear about over and over and over again. Um, traffic, um, tho- those are key things to emphasize. And there, there are other things, you know, where, again, where we've seen something many, many times. Um, it probably doesn't serve any of us to have, it doesn't serve the applicant, it certainly doesn't serve uh, the commission, and it certainly doesn't serve the, the staff in my view to, to spend a bunch of time writing um, on topics that are, we're not going to spend any time on because they're going to go through very quickly. And so wh- whether there's a shortened version that gets presented and then if it really gets kind of uh, interesting and we have to go back and do the longer one or and we know from a data perspective that, you know, fifty of this has always gone through, we're just not going to spend any more time on it because we don't need to. I'll just be clear that I, I, I don't take from the commissioners, nor do I take from the staff. This is just for a matter of public record, that anyone is trying to short circuit the process of giving, allowing feedback from uh, community citizens when and where they're, that they, they would like to make that. This is simply an effort to try to make it more efficient for everyone, um, where we're not seeing a lot of, a lot of attention there. So I'm, I'm quite supportive.
I was going to take it one step further. Maybe we're saying the same thing, but maybe we are not. Any of my past rules, one thing I'm very clear on is that for any work, you go to the expert. So the staff to me is, are the experts on planning. Our role is to provide some input to them, provide some input advisement to the council and be the voice of the community. That's, I think, for me personally, that's kind of what I think about. So I would defer to the staff on what they think needs to be presented to us or vice versa. To your point, I, this is not about short circuiting any process. But I also know that the same community is also not very happy or thrilled about the fact that the projects that show up take a long time to get approved. And it's not because of the staff is not doing the work, it's just, it gets stuck in the queues, uh, between us, the council and, and other bodies. So I would rather leave it to the staff to tell us how to improve the processes. And then we just take feedback from the community. We see the K P I's about, about turnaround times and about cost. And if they're in the right direction, life is good. Community is happy, cost is low. We can all go home. If one of these two things are not there, then we together go figure it, figure it out.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I have quite the same kind of absolutist view that you do. I, I do think there is a public service we are here to provide, which is to try to make sure that we're representing the entire community in, in, in what's happening. And so, you know, I, there have been many times where we've sat here and we've had conversations with the staff that, you know, they're making their best guess, but in, you know, when we talk through with them together, we end up with kind of a modified version that goes forward. And so I do think that there's s- some healthy feedback back and forth. But the, the, the point being that they're certainly more expert than any of us, well, maybe not, uh, maybe not with our new commissioner. But, uh, uh, th- than the rest of us, they're certainly more expert than that. And so there is some, there's some reliance that I think happens on a routine basis. And I, I don't think there's disagreement across this group, uh, to that point.
Yeah, I don't know, and, and I would agree. And I think the, your point about we've constantly seen those boundary conditions where we do see the, the community's feedback. Noise, you know, parking, traffic or taller buildings surrounding single family homes. So, so we know the, the patterns that where, where we have the community negative feedback. And we need to be very cognizant of those. And I think if we actually spend time on those, uh, in a matter of a policy decision, then we can take away the staff's administrative work and help them also do their jobs. And ha- and, and actually have the staff also be happier doing their jobs. I'm, I'm sure you're not very happy building twenty page documents to serve the planning commission or the council every time. You know, I, I've been in your shoes, uh, as, as a, as someone, you know, I told you before in that meeting, I would get a call from my C E O saying, you know, I'm from corporate, I'm here to help you. And I'm like, man, just stay away, I'll tell you when I want your help. So, but okay, I, that's it.
I have a quick comment. Um, one thing that I came across in doing my, um, since I am new, I had to go through the two hour online re, uh, process. And it, to be honest, I, it was very interesting, all the information that was presented. But the biggest thing that I took away from that was it literally said the what the planning commission is there to do and represent. And it was very general and it says, the commissioners should be a cross section of the community so that they can represent the community in the best way. And I think that was something for me that I don't think I expected that answer. I, I think I came in and said, oh, everybody should be experts and really understand. And it's like, I got kind of a, I got stepped back because I think i- i- I didn't realize that the commission is supposed to be that kind of general outlook on what is being presented and what is going on into the city. And so I think staff is the, you know, they are, they completely understand, you guys do all the work, you understand what we're trying to do. But I think the commissioners are a cross section of this, of the town and kind of their voice in saying, okay, that's great, but here's what I think the people may think about that. And I, it was very interesting that, I'm like, okay, if we simplify it down to just that is, is you five are a repres- cross section of the city and it's your comments on what is being presented and that's your, our role. And I thought that was really nice, simple, direct goal or what our duties are. And, um, I just wanted to reiterate that because I, I was not fully aware that that was kind of like the melted down version of what a planning commissioner was. And it wasn't just planning commissioner, it was city council, it was everybody. Um, but I thought that was a great definition. And I think it just lets everybody know that, you know, even if every, nobody's up here as an expert at it, it's, we are representing the people. And I think that was, that was amazing.
Shall we continue, Mr. Jane?
Yeah, I mean, if people want to chime in, I don't, I'm not in a rush, but, uh, I think this is the last part. I think really we stepped back from, and it was going on in our minds quite a bit, like, what would that letter look like? If we were to send that to the, uh, council or what, what would be actually want to present? And I think I, I have come to a realization that it's going to require a little bit more digging. Uh, it may not be a letter, it may be us understanding a little bit more about what we want to do long term uh, and how we can help communicate that message cohesively. So I think we, we would like to, and this is me and Vivek, uh, we would like to formalize this subcommittee uh, to take a look at the work items on the staff side, also help them streamline some of the process. Uh, more work with them just to be a sounding board and, uh, bring back to this group some of the items which we think are worth highlighting, uh, to this commission as well as to the council, uh, to consider. And some of that, there's, there's no action, like, we're not going to say this is what needs to happen. It, it's just to bring to the table for discussion in this group. And before it goes out to anybody else, we collectively discuss those areas of interest and say that, oh, these are really the right priorities or these are not. Like, these are areas of improvement or these are not, just like what we discussed on streamlining the process. Uh, like there, there are a few things on our mind. And I, I don't think just sending a letter focusing on East Pleasanton or a particular neighborhood that, that is a wise thing to do at this point. You, you want to add anything, Commissioner Moore?
No, I, I agree with you. And I think, uh, our joint, I think we, we discussed and, you know, talked among ourselves that, that it, all of us need to be aligned.
know, talked among ourselves that it, all of us need to be aligned around, around the roles or, or whatever we have, we are discussing. It's not just two of us or the subcommittee that's kind of leading it. Our role is just to maybe brainstorm and work with the staff and kind of get this input like we did today to the entire commission and then get your feedback. And then make sure that all of us are aligned going forward. And I think once we do that, it'll probably be a lot more streamlined for us, for the staff, and frankly, even for the other bodies that we engage with, including possibly even the, the council. One thing we did not talk about, there were, there were some, you know, there's some examples you were talking about where I think both sides were, were working on something very similar. And to me, that seemed like a duplication and then the staff was probably having to work on both, with both the bodies to, you know, fulfill the need for information. So I think there is, there is work that can be done in, in various areas with streamlines our work, the staff's work, and also helps it make it faster among the various bodies, if that makes sense. Anything else, sir?
Yeah, I think that's, that's all it is. Really, we also thought about that joint meeting with the council and, you know, it, it's not very clear to us that within the Planning Commission, we are clear on a few things. So it would not make sense to just go and have that random meeting or random discussion. I, I think we need to be bringing up things which are important to the community, important to us. And it can't be like 100 things, like even the work items they have, there will be priorities which will be set in July 15th meeting. So that could be an input to us as well, like what the council is thinking about. And really things have to mesh, right? Like whatever is the council priority, priority, whatever is our priority, they, they have to be lined up and aligned for the least friction between the processes. So I, I think that's where we want to go. We're looking for support from the rest of the commissioners and we're going to also hearing other ideas.
Commissioner Jen, he did most of the work here. So thank you, including this wonderful Google Docs.
It's all AI.
All AIs, brilliant. That's all what I can say.
Thanks. Yeah, I do appreciate the, the work that the both of you put into this to try to help us think through these issues. I guess I'm not clear on what you're looking for with four. So I think, I think what I'm hearing you say is four would work to come up with kind of some small set of priorities that we would focus on in, in the effort to kind of streamline processes that we would work with the staff on. Is that it or is there, am I missing the, the point there?
So that came out after the discussion with staff, but I think we, we want to look at the work items on the list and like, just look at the priorities of the council as well, because that will come out on July 15th and try to match them up and see like where we want to really go longer term. Also, this whole idea about short-term versus long-term, item three, streamlining, has to add value by freeing up some time for long-term planning and other work. It's not just like you improve things, but that productivity is then not utilized. So how, how can we really focus on things which we really want to do as a community?
I guess I'm not. I can ask to your point, asking for support from the council to form a subcommittee or task force, whatever you want to call it, to focus working with the staff on number three predominantly initially, and then over time pivoting into probably number two item on, on the list. That's the way I would, I would frame it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, I guess I'm, guys.
Go ahead.
That we don't, the, the priorities for the commission are set by the city council.
I'm not talking about the priorities for the.
Well, that's what long, but the long-range plan, like that's set by the council. Like we're not gonna, we're not gonna set that. Like we don't get to disagree with what they come out with on the 15th and then say.
Yes, agree. That's why we're not saying we're gonna send them a letter. But if there's a conversation with the staff, for example, which jointly we are all agreed on, we are also an advisory body to the council. It is not a one-way street. I mean, the, the way this works, as you know, in your role in, in, in public companies, the, the advisory bodies or the different committees are set up to assist the, the main board or the council in helping them out with specific tasks. So as far as planning is concerned, I do think we have frankly, an obligation to give our viewpoint to the council of what we think should be done. They have a perfect right to say no. They have a perfect right to do something alternate or something on their own. But I think we are remiss if we don't, if we are always our, our order takers or this is a one-way flow, I think we are remiss in our jobs.
Yeah. I, I agree. I think we need to give feedback to council. I think that's what happens in these meetings when we are helped, when we're working with staff to formulate the recommendation that goes to them. I mean, what, the last meeting, there was a takeaway, Melinda, that you guys are bringing back in what, another couple of weeks, that that's gonna give feedback to the coun- I guess I'm struggling with, like I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know, I don't know how to get to, I don't know what two is and I don't know how to get to two. And so I don't know how I can support two. I, I think what, what I would say is if, if, if what the subcommittee wants to do is look at three, and I'm just referring to the things that are on the war, the board, if they're looking at how does a subcommittee work with staff to try to streamline the process for what we would expect staff to, to, to present to us that would allow us to make it easier for them and allow us to fulfill our duties, that feels great. I'm struggling with two. I, I don't, I don't know how to think about two and I don't, and I think we do two every single time we give feedback to the, the commission around these policy issues as they come up. But like the, the broader set of priorities and so forth, that's, we, we'll weigh in there, just like we did with the capital plan last time or whatever. But, you know, when we did the, the mall, we were giving lots of feedback to council. When we do east side planning that's coming up, we're gonna be giving lots of feedback. So I guess I'm struggling with what two means, but I'm, I'm aligned on what three is.
Yeah. So I think that's what we are struggling with too, right? So that's why we don't have any recommendations for you or the Planning Commission at this point. We're just saying we need some time and we need the directive from the council, which will come on July 15th, whatever their priorities are. So we, we don't really know what it's gonna look like. We, we are just deferring that work. At the moment, there are low-hanging things on streamlining stuff. So that's what we will be focusing initially on. And other things are up in the air at this moment, even for.
Can I add something? I, I actually, I would, based on what you said, actually I agree with you. Cause I think number two is very vague at this point. So, so I understand where you're coming from now. So I think let me, let me try and modify what we, what we are asking. And feel free to say no, but you, we're asking for support on number three, right? At this point, period. The other stuff, let's noodle through it. And if we come to some ideation along with the staff, we'll come back. But before we do any work on that, we will first run the ideation with you. And then if you agree with it, we'll go on number two.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm sorry to interrupt. So I, I think that one, one concern that I have in hearing this conversation, and I understand, I think, the intent, which is to add some maybe more focused expertise to a conversation about something which I think broadly we agree is, all agree is a good idea, which is streamlining. I think the concern that I have is, is timing and process and, and how that works. So, you know, in the end, staff will, we're, we haven't, we haven't figured out the timing of it yet. We need a staff resource that's going to be focused on the streamlining program. And then that's the time at which we would be wanting to kind of get into the work of, of doing that sort of more detailed work to figure out what the pieces are. That will come back to the, to the Planning Commission. And I think if the, if there's a benefit to, in the view of the Planning Commission, to having a subgroup of the Planning Commission, you know, maybe work on some focused, first issues in a, in a pretty, you know, in a, in a focused manner. But I'm pretty concerned that we are, and I appreciate it, we, I understand and hear, we hear the, what the priority is and, and staff shares it. But we also have to integrate that into our workload and our program and our focus. And I don't want to embark upon a work effort that we can't support as staff. And, and so it has to happen in the right manner and at the right time. So this is sort of the concern just about, and I, I said it in the last presentations, about the work program really has to be set by council. Council sets the priorities and then staff goes forth, does that work. We, we figure out the pacing and the program of that. And at the right points, we, we, we come back to the Planning Commission for input. And there's an opportunity in that to, for the Planning Commission to decide to appoint members, it may be Commissioners Jane and Mohan, it might be other members of the commission that might be interested in doing that, that work. And, and maybe do some sort of focused, you know, sit downs, we might look in detail at some sections or something. But the, the commission, or remember, or subcommittee of the commission sort of starting to direct the, the work of staff is, is, is not, it isn't, it isn't appropriate and it can't, it, it, it's, it's very difficult for it to, to start to happen that way. So I would be reluctant to set up a subcommittee where, where that was the, and maybe that's not the intent, but that was, where that was in, in any, in any way an expectation. That, you know, our municipal code and our rules and procedures are really clear about sort of the way that the direction of staff happens. It happens from the city council via the city manager and from the city managers to staff. And so that's how we have to organize our, our, our work because otherwise it quickly becomes untenable for us to do and, and manage all of the things that we have to do, of which this, this is gonna be one.
So I think that's a fair point, if I, if I can. Two, two points here. Maybe if that is the, what is, what is required, then maybe a letter to the council is, is in order, right? That's one. But secondly, I'm a little bit puzzled here because what I heard was that there's a lot of extra work that is being done by the staff that is non-value add. And if we don't do it, we actually have more satisfied citizens and also faster turnaround times and, you know, lower cost. Are we saying that that should be put on the back burner and we should do whatever we are doing today and keep on doing it till the time the council says, don't do extra work? Is that what we just said?
No, I think, I think you misunderstood me. So, so it's, it's a priority.
Go ahead.
We, we articulated that it's, it is in our work plan. It's our intention to do that work and to do that, you know, I mean, I, we don't have, we don't have the work program lined up, right? So I'm not, I'm not saying this to, to defer it or to, or to postpone it. But what I'm saying is we need to take a, a considered look at how that work, because it will be work, gets integrated into our overall, you know, body of things that, that our, that our staff is, is working on. Melinda, myself, the planning team. And, and, and how that gets sort of paced out is, we, we need, we need, we as staff need to be able to sort of implement, implement the priorities in a manner that is, that is, that is feasible. And so it's, it's enough for us, I think, to hear and understand that the Planning Commission would like us to prioritize that and put that on the front burner. And, and we do too. I think they're gonna hear that from the council and interest in also, you know, sort of fast-tracking and making that work happen. So, you know, that's, that's the commitment that I can give to you is, is that we are, we have, we share that interest. And I don't think we need a, I mean, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm not sure a subcommittee would necessarily help us reach a different conclusion or, or accomplish that any faster.
I think if we, if we as a commission are cognizant of that this is something that we all agree on, and I think everybody in this room agrees on it, I think, I think we as the commission have to realize that, like what you just said is, it's a priority to you. You have a lot of things to do to get that to even started to be implemented. But I think what we would probably ask, or I'm thinking we would want to ask is, when you get to that point and you are sitting down and going, okay, how can we lower the workload or give the council less? I mean, I, I, I reviewed the thousand pages of the, the document that was given for Stanford Health. And there was about 200 pages of, of Soles reports. And, and I know what they say. And I realized immediately, well, there's 200 pages, no, none of us need to see. And I know it may have just been an included item in a packet, but I think we can be available, and I don't know the process on how that works. But when you're getting to that point saying, okay, what is the, what is the commissioner and where are the committee, what do they need to see for them to vote on this project? I think we would like to be a part of that and involved in that by you asking us, and I don't know how it works if you individually asked us or if you ask us in a meeting, but hey, where can we streamline the information that you get from us? That's where I think we step in and go, great, here's what I want to see. Here's what I need to see. Here's a question I have. But I don't think we need to proactively give that information to you because it may not be time for you to get it.
Correct.
I think, I think that's the.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think you said it well. It's really about how, you know, sort of creating the right, the right time, timing and the right forum for that input. And I think, you know, if, I think it would be very reasonable for, for staff, and it's not gonna happen, you know, next meeting, but perhaps after the city council work session, to, to bring back to you an understanding of kind of what that, I'll just call it the streamlining project, right? Whatever, like what that looks like, right? And where there might be opportunities for, for the Planning Commission. Because I think your feedback, for example, on the content of staff reports, maybe some, you know, examples from other jurisdictions that are a little bit more, you know, bit, bit shorter, a little bit more succinct, might, might give us some ideas about how a models that, that would, would seem at appropriate level of detail, for example. And there, and in, in that, I'm not dismissing the idea of a subcommittee because I think there are times and the council does this from time to time, there's sort of a little bit, something a little bit more detailed. And it's where it's sort of sitting down and you sit around a table and you roll up your sleeves and you actually look at, you know, something in a bit more depth and detail than, than we have the chance to do here in this, in this meeting. And that can be valuable. But I would say, I would just, my ask would be, can you let staff maybe come back with a proposal and, and, and bring that back to the, to the commission and, and get you to weigh in on, on that and, and, and help us to direct, I think, what is really appreciated and sort of well-intentioned support for, for getting that moving forward.
Personally, that, to me, frankly, either way is fine. The only, I'm challenging all of us here, right? I think all of us have expressed a view that some of the processes and the way of doing work in Pleasanton might be heavy compared to what we've seen elsewhere and even compared to maybe some other places in, in, in the tri-valley. But most importantly, compared to what you think actually is needed. That's what I've heard you say. If that is the case, I would challenge all of us to say, forget the subcommittee, forget everything. There is a person who knows what needs to be done. It does not require consultants, it does not require massive fancy, you know, presentations. It just requires maybe one person who might be the expert here to say, hey, Mountain View or, or City ABC does it this way and it's half the, half the time. And that's really all what it is. I mean, I, I think we're making it a little bit bigger than what it is. Maybe this word, subcommittees and task forces has a specific connotation in government. I would, would not want that. I am just challenging us to get some stuff done, not wait for councils and the next two years of discussions while we prioritize between the 91 and come down to 84.
It's, it's, no, it's, it's gonna be, I mean, well, my, I'm, we're hoping it's gonna be one meeting and the city council will look at the long list of priorities and give, and give staff some direction about where they think our priorities should, should lie. And that doesn't mean we don't have the opportunity for some, some morphing and deciding on how that exactly plays out. You know, because we're right, you know, the, the action is streamline some programs and then there's a lot of definitional things about what, how we actually scope that. So I think that it's not gonna be a two-year process. So I think that it's not going to be a two-year process to decide what our priorities is. It should be, it should be quick. We have to, we have to have our direction so we can move forward. And I think within the framework of that direction is what we'd like to come back progressively to the planning commission and say, you know, in a, in a typical way, you know, whether it's through a staff report or through a workshop type of a format, you know, seek input from the commission that, that helps us to, to move forward and understand what, what you think is, is helpful.
And, and I'll add, even after our, our meeting, we're already looking at ways to reduce our agenda reports. So, coming soon, July 9th.
Hopefully we also see how that will tie with customer set and some cost reduction, right? With the reduction in cycle time, because cost is an issue for the city right now. And adding taxes is one way to do it, reducing costs is the other.
Microphone.
I think I made my point.
Commissioner Jane, you talked a bit about spending time on short-term, long-term and making sure or considering everything and not just approving projects that are before us in the moment. And I'm just trying to think about, you know, areas where I can do more of that as a planning commissioner. And obviously, I can understand these documents, the economic development strategic plan well. I know there's a long laundry list of things that we could work on. I can understand for myself what I think the top priorities are. And if I have a viewpoint on what we should really be focusing our efforts on, I have the option of meeting with people on city council or with staff to express my views about a particular topic that's very important to me. Or we also have the ability to meet with business owners and community members because Mr. Jago suggested that, you know, we are representing the community. So if there are businesses that are affected or have the opportunity to, to do projects that help us in the long term, I can meet with those people myself. And, and if I feel very strongly about something and I want to generate consensus within our group, we can also ask for staff presentations on particular hot topics where we're interested in drilling into a little bit more. So I feel like I have some tools to, to do some of those things you described, and some of it is the onus is on me to be proactive in those areas.
Yeah, I think the challenge for me is, once council decides a priority, like, how do we make that as a policy improvement for planning commission? Like, how, how does that translate into our policy as a group? Because if they're saying, "I'm going to prioritize A, B, and C, but on the planning, we're not doing A, B, and C, we're doing something else all the time." So how, how do we create opportunity for those A, B, C things to happen? And the item three was really to create that opportunity, that room in the staff's time to be able to do those things.
And that's, and, and so that's the, that's the prioritization process. The, the ABCs get turned into my work plan, my departmental work plan, and we report back and, and that's how I'm assessed, my performance is assessed at the end of the year, is to say, "Here was a list of things that you identified that you were going to do this fiscal year, or this fiscal year, and here's what we accomplished on those things." And so we have to be in alignment with the council and then the planning commission, you know, is, is executing that plan with staff. And then we really should be aligned with that, but really, again, it comes from the council, from that priority, and we, we execute on that plan.
If I can, the interest of time, here's my two cents on this. I think I, I don't want, and as I said before, I don't want to create extra work for anyone, right? So the staff feels that the work is already starting and maybe there's a prioritization that's required, absolutely. I, I don't think we need to create more work where you again have, we are from corporate, we're here to help you kind of scenario. My, my, personally, and I think all of our desire is that we together figure out this item number three, that's going to help us, help you, help the council, help the city budget.
Yes.
And if, and when we do require a subcommittee, I actually was thinking that, you know, Commissioner Jago, given his, his expertise in, in this specific area, actually would be a great person to have maybe in my place for this role because you know the process, all I can do is pontificate. So, so if and when the committee is formed, yeah, we should have, look at some other members also for the committee. And maybe we should pause it for now, I think that's not spend too much time.
Yeah, I think so. I, I think we, we don't want this meeting to go until midnight. And we, we can pause this discussion at this moment. And I also would like to see what the priority of city council is and if I agree with that or not, like personally. And I can also reach out to them personally on some of those items.
So no proposals for action items here? We'll, we'll pause and then you will come back to us as you'd like to further this discussion, correct?
Yeah, I think, I think given staff's feedback, I think, let's pause for now and we'll, if we come back, we'll come back with, with, in alignment with the staff, you know, based on if the staff feels that this is truly a value add for them rather than just more work. That's, that's the way I would see it.
Yeah, we, we are here to reduce work. We, we did not intend to create more work.
All right. Any other comments on item five, going once, going twice? So, okay.
Good, good discussion, that really, I think it was really helpful, helpful feedback. And it was, I think, I, I actually think we're in, in very good alignment on this and that's not always the case. I think that the planning commission and the things that you've expressed interest in doing, that, that staff is very interested in doing, I think the council is interested in doing are all, are all coming together. And all of those things suggest that they, that will, there'll be emphasis on them and they'll, they'll move forward faster. And that's, that's really what we hope to do because we have to clear the way by getting rid of some of the, you know, the clutter that we have in our process to let us focus on strategic planning, long-range planning and things like that. So we're all, I think we're all rowing in the same direction, which is great.
So we didn't reach any decisions, but we at least had a discussion on the, the long term and what some of the opportunities are and understand maybe all a little bit better about our roles and how it fits in with staff and, and city council and maybe more to follow.
Yeah, and I think one action item is to share the roles and responsibilities because we, we, if we are not clear as a group.
And I, I apologize. I think that I, it was, it was amiss by me not to have, have shared, at least shared back with the commission what the amended municipal code, we were really following, again, following the direction of the council, they gave us some direction on particularly the, the commission reorganization and we just were sort of feeling it was a more routine implementation of that direction. But I, I do see that a sort of a check-in or a report back to the planning commission would have been in order. So I apologize for missing that, missing that step.
And I remember you talking about merging everything. And so, yeah, I think it was just, it was just a, something that none of us came back to close the gap on.
Housekeeping, but it was important housekeeping that helped you to understand, you know, what your, kind of your, your pervy was and.
So it was all out in the open, we just didn't follow through to reach a conclusion on what the final document would be. We'd moved on to something else by then. So let's go to item six, meeting, reports from meetings attended, committee, task force, et cetera. Mr. Jago, any meetings?
I did not attend any meetings.
Okay. Mr. Jane?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Mohan?
Nothing.
Mr. Pace?
Nothing, thank you.
And then Mr. Wedge?
Nothing.
And nothing for me as well. Actions by city council, and I guess in the spirit of, you know, understanding priorities and direction, if there's anything there that, you know, helps inform us to of future direction.
I'll put it back on you and say if there's anything here of interest you have a question about, I'd be happy to answer it, but these were pretty routine items, mostly contract approvals and, and agreements and very routine, routine items of city business.
So I think.
Well, and that's true.
Go ahead. I, I had a question on something else. So I think when we approve the renewal of these professional service agreements, do we look at their performance? Like what indicators do we look at?
We, we do. So we, in that case, had some consultants that we've been working with, I wouldn't say it's sort of performance in a, in a metrics kind of way, but we certainly can report back whether experience working with that consultant was positive, whether they were timely with their work product. And then we did also a competitive interview process where we looked at qualifications, we met their team and made a selection on new consultants as well. So we do, we, you know, very important who we work with, so we do try and do, do quite a bit of vetting there.
Yeah, I, I think there, there can be some improvement, but I, I don't want to delve into that. I, I would love to see, or maybe it's a public record, how we evaluate their performance when the renewals come. So I can possibly reach out to you or somebody offline. My experience wasn't that great with some of them and.
With the Sequoia consultants?
No, the professional services for plan checking.
Oh, the plan checkers, I'm sorry, thank you, yes. Okay, we, yeah, no, we would actually, yeah, I'm sure the building official would, would appreciate that feedback as a customer of, of those things, we, a different perspective, so.
And I, I don't think we collect any customer, and it's not just me, I talk to a lot of community members, the feedback across the board was similar, that it's very painful to work with these third-party consultants. So, but there, there's no mechanism for us to collect that feedback. So it's not like after we finish the process, we ask the community for a survey, that never came to me. And if it came, I, I would have told my opinions and my fellow community members would have.
Okay.
So, you know, something which I'm very interested in knowing as a resident.
Thank you, yeah. We, we, we will share that with our chief building official. And I will say, in past years, I was not involved in this round, but in past years I was. And so we, we do keep track, for example, on our plan check consultants, if they're consistent, consistently late in, in their reviews, you know, that is documented, that goes in consideration. And, and there are some other metrics that we do keep track of. And, and again, like Rob can definitely explain that in greater detail than I can.
Yeah, and we do have the opportunity to provide feedback to our consultants as they work, right? And, and so Rob, I know, building official works, works closely and sometimes when, you know, he feels like they're being too onerous or over, you know, over, over redlining plans, we do try and sort of keep that in check, but it's helpful to hear from customers as well.
Yeah, so I think not just one data point, right? Like we should be more methodical in that customer feedback. Once a plan check is done, like we should really be looking for how, how would the community members read their experience? And that's something which you can take back. Again, I don't know what role planning commission has to say, but I'm just saying that as a resident of Pleasanton and having gone through the process more than once.
Yeah, thank you. We will definitely share that.
In terms of actions by city council, I find it helpful to look at the city council agendas every other week and listen to the items where they might be planning committee related. And I'm sure that many of you are doing the same thing there too.
I mean, just as a note, one thing to maybe streamline meetings, and then we're talking a lot now, but, you know, we, we have, we have talked in the past about putting this item, this part of the agenda on the consent, on the consent. So you would still receive the same information, would still have the opportunity to ask questions, but if it was routine items and there were no questions, it would pass quickly on consent rather than being a separate discussion item like, like we were doing right now. So if there was interest in doing that, staff would be happy to make that change. I mean, I, maybe it's not time to ask or vote on it, but, you know, if there's interest in doing that, we can, we can, we can.
Seems like it would streamline for you.
Sure, all right.
And we were just up here discussing over the last hour.
To clarify, Ellen, are you talking about like actions of the city council and, and the future planning calendar?
Up to you. Actions of the city council certainly is really more of a report. So if it, we could provide the same report just on consent. If you, if future planning calendar, you'd rather have the opportunity to, to talk about it than it should stay on the agenda, but it's really the commission's.
I'd like to have for now the opportunity to talk about the future planning calendar. The other topic is past information and I can get that from other sources and I'm happy to personally to have that on the consent calendar. Any other feedback?
I agree with what you said.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I, I would rather like to see a longer-term future planning calendar, not just, you know, short-term.
We'll work on, on giving you a longer, a longer look ahead.
So rather than, you know, not have anything there, and you can put that also on consent calendar, like I, I, I think I don't mind even that item to be on consent calendar.
How about we leave it off for now, just in case there's discussion on it? Because as we see a longer-term planning calendar, we may want to have discussion and then to have to pull it off, the consent is maybe challenging. So after we look at the, the longer-term one, if it gets to a point where we're not asking questions and, and.
Can I, can I make a suggestion there maybe is that we, let's wait until, until July 15th meeting is passed, that will give us, I think, our kind of our big picture roadmap to the future. We can come back, report holistically on that and then going forward from there, do the three-month look ahead, does that make sense?
Okay. Speaking of future planning calendar.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so as you can see, there are two items listed and then I can give you a couple more from memory. So we have the conditional use permit for a ceramic studio at 1061 Serpentine Lane. And we will, based off of some of the comments this evening, look at a more abbreviated, more streamlined staff report. I'm, the project planner will greatly appreciate that. And then the other item, you saw, you saw a version of this prior, this is what I call the PUSD vineyard site. They are coming back with the besting tentative map and they're looking at the concept of splitting the park or splitting the open space, which was a, resulted as from discussions with the surrounding residential neighbors. Another item which we already talked about that, that we will hopefully be, be, be bringing back to the commission in the next couple of meetings are revisions to the IBB Innovation-Based Business Ordinance or Innovation-Based Business Changes, based off of comments received from planning commission. So thank you very much. And then another item also coming, I apologize, I don't have the address, it's Hana Japan, it's a proposed Japanese restaurant at the corner of Dublin Canyon Road and Foothill Road. It's a vacant parcel right now. And so they, that is coming to the planning commission because it's, because it's new construction. And also hoping to bring that back in the second meeting in, in June. For a little bit further out, and no date, please don't commit us any date, as Assistant City Attorney Kim knows, we are working on further changes to the ADU ordinance, based off of comments we received from the state, from specifically from HCD. So we're waiting to get, get some additional comments, feedback from the state, and then we will be bringing that back to the planning commission who will review and then make a recommendation to city council. And that concludes our future planning calendar report.
Those looks ahead are very helpful to me, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we'll try and write them down next time.
Matters initiated by commission members, let's start with you, Commissioner Mohan. At the very start of the meeting, you were talking about the CIP review. So I, I don't know if your questions have been answered or if this is something that we need to discuss tonight.
No, I think for now, let's, let's park all this, let's wait for the council meeting, the workshop. And, and because to me, and also get the roles and responsibility document, that'll make things more clear. Because I was basing my comment based on that document that you saw, which was a review of the CIP.
Right.
Which is not a, which is very different from a FII kind of given to us.
Different than, does it conform with the general plan? Yeah.
Exactly, right. So that's all, I'll hold my comments till we see the document.
All right. Matters initiated by commission members, Commissioner Wedge?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Pace?
Thank you.
Mr. Jane?
None, thank you.
Mr. Jago?
None.
And none for me. So let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting.